Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of March 14th, 2019. Please join me in saluting to the flag.
Let's fly the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Public Meetings Act, the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. And first, Sam's not here.
Roll call.
Okay, so we will move on that. Oh, roll call, that would be good.
Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Scobbo, Mr. Debb, Mr. Peazin?
Present.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hestag?
Here.
Committeeman Leponti?
There.
Mayor Delkord?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Saraj?
Yes, here. Okay. First up, we have consideration of meeting minutes of December 13th. I believe those were just received by the board this afternoon, and just, you know, assuming that not everyone's had a chance thoroughly reviewed them, that perhaps we can continue them to the next meeting. Everyone's?
Make a motion for that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do I need to do a roll call, Eric? Or? All in favor.
Aye.
All right, we'll move those along.
Moving to the March 28th meeting.
Correct, March 28th meeting. Next, consideration of resolutions. I'm also going to ask for this next one, Hillsborough 206 Holdings, because that came out like yesterday afternoon, and they're tied in with the meeting minutes of December 13th. If everyone is good with that, we'll also continue those, move them to the March 28th meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, resolution recommending adoption of the redevelopment plan for Block 86, Lot 21, and Block 90, Lot 6.01. May I have?
Mr. Chairman, the eligible member, all members present are eligible to vote except for you.
That doesn't seem fair.
Life is not always fair.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments from the dais?
Mr. Chairman, we have gone through this redevelopment plan also at the Township Committee level, so just so everyone's clear on the process here.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments from the dais from the floor, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Peazin?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Next, we'll open up to business from the floor. If anyone would like to comment or provide any comments, if items not on this evening's agenda, you may step forward. Seeing none, we are moving on to considerations of ordinances. Ordinance 2019-06, ordinance amending Green Village Districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an ordinance that was introduced to the Township Committee on February 26th, and it's been referred to the Planning Board for any comment you might have. The ordinance amends the Green Village zoning district. This is the Green Village now known as Brookhaven Development on Route 206 North up by Valley Road. The amendment would permit construction of an additional 130 dwelling units under Brookhaven Lot Development, increasing the total number of units on the site from 469 to 599, of which 143 units would meet affordability requirements. This is an inclusionary development. The amendment would make the approval of the additional dwelling units contingent upon the developer gaining approval for a hotel. The hotel is a permitted use, but this amendment would tie the additional units to the movement of that hotel. The ordinance does not revise the boundaries of the Green Village District, doesn't otherwise reclassify it, it just adds additional units, and, as I said before, it keeps the hotel intact. The purpose of the amendment is consistent with the stated purposes of the Green Village District, which is to establish a mixed-use zone that provides for affordable housing, multifamily housing, hotel, retail, office, and restaurant uses.
Thank you. Comments from the dais?
Now, clearly, in this particular piece, the hotel is something that was contemplated in that development. Nice to be able to tie this together, to make sure that we get that, which is something that we've been planning for as part of our affordable piece. So this is something that, in that development, let's see the hotel, and so I'd like to move forward with this change to be able to get the hotel in there.
One other note for the board, the rezoning also calls for a change in the location.
Correct.
The hotel is going to be moved to the front of the property where it was currently zoned for the rear of the property, and the residential additional will be in the rear.
Correct.
So on the 2064 inch.
Right, makes a lot of sense. Any additional comments?
So, no more retail, it's just a hotel and additional units?
Yes.
Okay. Sir Eric, the appropriate would be a roll call?
A motion to approve the ordinance without changes and recommend it back to the Township Committee for adoption.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Any additional comments? Anyone from the floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Peazin?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Committeeman Leponti?
Yes.
Mayor Delkord?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraj?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to applications, first one up, Town Center Family Dental, file number 18-PV-15, MSPV, Block 199, Lot 57, commonly known as 417 to 419, Route 206, and also Lot 59, commonly known as 411, Route 206. The applicant seeking amended preliminary and final major site plan approval, see bulk variances and waivers to construct additions to the existing building in two phases.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike O'Grady, I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw Gillespie O'Grady &amp; Fisher. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Dr. Albert Intronosha, through his business, Town Center Family Dental. This is, we're here tonight seeking final approvals necessary to construct a building addition in the existing family dentistry practice located at 419, Route 206, at Block 199, Lot 57. It's located in the Town Center TC Zone. Property known as Town Center Plaza is located in the architectural site design overlay zone and is located just to the rear, to the south of New Ammo and Route 206, in the rear portion of the lot directly behind PIPAC Gladstone Bank. Town Center Plaza has shared parking with Lot 39 to the north and is occupied by Alfonso's Pizza, Dunkin' Donuts, and other small retail businesses. This project proposes phase construction, adding a total of 1,406 square feet and additional handicap spaces and signage. Phase 1 is intended to be a 243-square-foot addition to the staff lounge and meeting area, and Phase 2 proposes an 1,163-square-foot expansion to the waiting room and reception area. The application will necessitate design waivers for 18-foot parking spaces where 20 feet are required. In addition, there's four existing nonconformities that will necessitate variances as follows: lot area, 1.81 acres are existing and two acres are required; front yard setback where the bank is, 97.4 feet is existing where five feet is required; the lot width is 124 feet where 150 feet is required; and for the 1.5-story building where two stories are required. The application also proposes updated signage, and variances will be required and necessitated for the three additional proposed signs. We've published our proofs and publication that have been submitted to the Board Secretary. And with me tonight, I have Mike Ford from Van Cleef Engineering here in Hillsborough. We also have our architect, Rocco Campanella, from Architecture Plus in Raritan. And we also have, if you have any operational questions, Dr. Intronosha, on behalf of Town Center Dental. So, you can swear on everybody or just Mike?
I'll do Mike first, one at a time.
Yes, I do. Yes, Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, licensed professional engineer and planner, the state of New Jersey, appeared before this board on numerous occasions.
Including last week, so.
Yes.
We all accept your qualifications.
Thank you. All right. Perhaps I can, Mr. O'Grady gave you, you know, an outline of the project, and what I have on the screen is an exhibit I'll refer to initially, which is an existing conditions exhibit. What it shows is, highlighted and colored, is the subject property, and then just to the north is where, I'll say, is the Dunkin' Donuts Commercial Center, and that's the shared access to Route 206 at the signalized intersection of New Ammo Road and 206. There's the PIPAC Gladstone Bank at the front of the property with parking behind it, and then the Town Center Dental is about in the middle of the property, and then to the rear of the property beyond, Town Center Dental is additional parking. The project involves simply just?
This has been previously provided to the board?
Yes, this is a colorized version of Sheet 1 in the site plan.
We mark, this is applicant 1.
And the second exhibit I'll refer to in a minute is Sheet 2, which is the proposed condition, and that's a colorized version of a plan that was submitted as part of the application.
Mark, that is A2.
And I'll go right to A2. This focuses in on the subject property, Lot 57, and the application, but for the fact that the total impervious coverage in the existing condition is over 50%, would have been classified as a minor site plan application. And that's because, in total, and it's so small, it's actually, I'll say, difficult to see on the exhibit, is the additions are these highlighted darker brown areas, in exhibit, in addition to the rear of the existing dental building, and then a small addition, which is basically enclosing an existing porch that is around that building now, that faces the interior parking area. So, in total, the 240-square-foot Phase 1 addition, and the 1,200-square-foot Phase 2 addition, and the reason for the phasing is so that one construction element of the building can be completed, the interior of the building be reoriented, so that the main entrance that right now exists, all the way at the back of the building, facing the rear
zone. Any project, even a project of this size, requires us to appear before this board informally first. So yes, we had that report then, and subsequent to that, we provided those detailed calculations to T&amp;M Associates through the application. And on page two, under Item D, grading and drainage, your board engineers concur that we've demonstrated that there's no adverse impact.
Okay. Yeah, because I know there was, there wasn't, there was not continuity through some of the engineers, so I just wanted to make sure it worked its way through.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with the drainage.
Okay. Thank you.
We have no further questions for this witness.
I do.
Okay.
Thanks. Just a few. Did you, if I missed it, did you talk about the illumination on the signs, how you're going to, each one's going to be lit?
Yes. The existing internally lit sign at the back of the site is internally lit. And then the only other internally lit sign is the one that would replace the main monument sign out at Route 206. All of the building-mounted sign and the sign that's on the porch would be externally lit with like gooseneck lights. They're actually shown on the plan that would be shielded.
And the ground-mounted signs are required to be landscaped around the base, I assume?
Yeah, no problem. We can do that.
We'll be doing that. You won't need any waivers from the design criteria on the signs, you just need the variances.
Correct.
Okay. You just need the correct parking table on the plan, as was pointed out, to get the correct numbers on there.
Will comply.
I'll skip over one. You show an existing shed on the property line. Is that yours or the neighbor's?
That's our shed. It's for maintenance equipment.
Okay. It's right on, it's on the neighbor's property. Does it belong there? According to your survey, your shed is on the neighbor's property, so you might want to address that at some point. Okay, now, there was a request, and I believe you submitted some information to talk about the cross-access agreement with Lot Number 59. Can you get into that?
Yeah, there is an existing cross-access easement. We can supplement it if you'd like, but...
Can you give us a brief summary of it?
It just allows ingress and egress between all of these, all of these lots.
And does it address parking, shared parking, or anything like that, or dedicated parking?
No, there's no dedicated parking.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you.
One question. Mr. Ford touching on Mr. Maskey's statement on the overall center, Lots 57 and 59. Will the proposed expansion to this building have any impact on the parking for the overall center?
No.
Okay.
Any additional comments or questions from the dais?
I just want to make sure, when you'll have the temporary main entrance, and then you'll do the new main entrance, will the, then the temporary one, will that still be in some type of entrance and exit, or is it going to be completely shut off?
No, that will become, I'll say, a different use. It's not, it's not, there not be a door to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So now, I'd like to have a motion open up to public.
So moved.
Okay, anyone favor?
Aye.
Okay, if anyone from the public would like to question this witness on his testimony, please come forward. Nope, he answered all their questions. Okay. Thank you. Move to your next.
Unless the board has any specific questions for the architect, I think Mike covered pretty much everything, but if you want me to introduce him, Swerden, we can do that. Otherwise, we would rest.
Okay. Anyone like to question the architect? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
The board wishes to entertain a motion to approve amended preliminary and final measure site plan approval, see bulk variances and waivers to construct the additions on the existing building, and the conditions established by the applicant, including conformance with all requirements set forth in the reports by the board engineer and the board planner.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Chairman, I'll move that, that application, as noted by Mr. Bernstein.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Love to see small businesses growing. We love to see the small businesses growing.
It's all painless now, right? It's painless dentistry today.
We don't want to be England.
Michael, do we have all the hard copies?
You want them? Here. Please. I'll do those.
Yeah. We didn't mark this one. 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 All right. Well.
Getting a sandwich by Dan Cleefson.
You want to eat a sandwich?
Cleef's Engineering.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman.
Got to lean in. Oh, no, not get away.
You got to get close to the mic, otherwise the man behind you who controls everything gets all...
Understood.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joe Sordillo, an attorney with the Loperum McRoy Deutsch Bavarian Carpenter. I'm here on behalf of the application for General Tools, excuse me, Tools Specialties, file number 19-PB-02-MSPV. I represent Preferred Freezer Services, who is the soon-to-be contract purchaser for Lot 35.01. Mr. Vincent Kramer, the attorney for General Tools Specialty, has submitted a letter to the board advising that I would be representing the application this evening. As long as that's acceptable to the chairman and the board, I would like to proceed.
Hit us, unless anyone else has an objection. No?
Thank you. Like I said, we're here on the application for the property identified as Block 183, Lots 35 and 35.01. This application is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with variance in waiver relief, C variance relief, to construct approximately 55,000 square, 838 square-foot warehouse and office building on Lot 35.01. Thirty, Lot 35, excuse me, Lot 35 is included because there is a shared associated access for the properties pursuant to the prior approvals for the, for these properties and associated stormwater-related improvements that will be occurring on both lots. Again, this property was originally created by subdivision by the board back in 2006, which created Lots 35 and 35.01. The property was subject to some prior approvals back in 2012 that permitted a approximately 29,000 square-foot solar away on Lot 35, and also subject to approval back just recently in 2018 for the construction of an approximate warehouse of 77,745 square feet, which was to be located on Lot 35.01. Pursuant to the letter that was submitted by Mr. Kramer, the, that was filed on behalf of SB Capital, that SB Capital has entered into litigation with the property owner, and as part of the stipulation of settlement in that litigation, they are relinquishing all rights to the prior 2018 approval. So now, we're here before the board tonight.
Why don't we, perfect place to stop, counsel.
Okay.
I think what needs to be entered into evidence is the stipulation, settlement, and the release so that there is a clear record to indicate, because I believe almost all the boards was here for the application last year, to ensure that the record clearly indicates that the property owner or the applicant from last year is no longer seeking the situation at hand, and that was what brings us to today.
All right. Then I would like to mark, and it probably makes sense to mark the letter from Mr. Kramer, dated March 12th, 2019, which attached the stipulation of settlement and which is previously submitted to the board as Exhibit A1.
For purpose of the record, Mr. Chairman, it's a two-page letter from Mr. Kramer dated March 12th, 2019, and a three-page stipulation of settlement signed by Mr. Kramer on behalf of General Tools, and Jeremy Dobrum in Esquire on behalf of SB Capital Associates that has been entered by the court, I believe. So we'll mark that as A1. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Counselor. Tonight, we're here on the current application, which is to develop a warehouse and office space on the property, but a reduced size. The proposed warehouse and office space will consist of approximately 55,538 square feet, of which approximately 48,312 square feet will be warehouse. And it is a cold storage warehouse, a specialty warehouse that we will provide testimony on, as well as approximately 7,526 square feet of office space. There'll be a reduction in the number of loading docks. Currently in our application, we're seeking approval for three loading docks and 35 parking spaces. As part of the prior approvals, there were conditions related to the access easement. I believe that originated back in the original subdivision in 2006 and has continued ever since, that if the Lot 35.01 was proved or developed, that the shared access should be provided through the quote-unquote "flagpole" of Lot 35.01. That is being proposed as part of this development. There is a easement currently being negotiated between the parties, which would be considered a condition of approval if the board does grant approval to this application.
The applicant has no problem in conditioning any building on the site to the filing of such easement?
No, no objection.
Thank you.
I have three witnesses this evening. I have our professional engineer and planner, Mr. Thomas Decker. I have an architect from RKB Architects, whose name is Wayne Benson, and a representative of Preferred Freezer, who will testify as to the actual use and the type of warehouse that's being proposed at the site, Mr. Sean Cunningham. At this time, I'd like to present our engineer, Mr. Tom Decker, to apply testimony.
Do you try to explain the title of the petition? I do. Thomas Decker, D-E-C-K-D-R.
Mr. Decker, have you testified before this board previously?
Yes, I have.
Good. You can sit, don't forget good, you can sit.
Thank you.
Mr. Decker, would you please present the application as, with regard to the engineering?
Certainly. As was mentioned, this is the site that was subject of a site plan last June. The board had granted approval, same location. Just to refresh the board's memory, it's on Sunnymead Road. It is located on a flag lot, which was created as part of a subdivision with General Tools. It is accessed by a 50-foot flag stem that extends to the rear of the property, to the open flag, in which the...
Are we going to mark this as A2, Tom?
Yeah, we can mark this as A2.
And could you indicate to the board what, where this is?
Yes. This is, this plan is titled Site and Landscaping Exhibit. It's essentially a colorized version of the plan submitted. It is, for orientation purposes, Sunnymead Road is to the left of the plan, where I'm indicating. That would be to the, to the west. And then to the north of the project, there are residential development. There's a single-family home that is very close to Sunnymead Road. It's on a narrow lot, which is essentially vacant towards the rear. Next to that is another residential lot, again, with the development closer to the road. That is a, both of those lots are in a residential district. The subject property is in the I-1 zone, and the properties to the south of that, leading down to where the railroad and Sunnymead Road cross, which is where the Unusi site is, that's also in the I-1 zone. What's existing on the site in the front, both properties are part of this application because there are improvements that are occurring on the General Tools property in the front. General Tools currently has a building, the manufacturer molds and so forth for manufacturing industry. They are accessed by a driveway to their parking lot in the front. As a condition of the subdivision that created the flag lot, the access from General Tools to Sunnymead is to be removed, and the drive, the parking area is now supposed to access that flag lot or the flag stem for the lot to the rear. This is identical to the situation of the June 2018 approval. So we have a, the access drive enters the site within the 50-foot flagstaff, and where things are different than what was previously approved is we have a much smaller building. The overall building size is 55,838 square feet, whereas the previous building was 77,745. So we've reduced the overall building size by approximately 22,000 feet. And we also have more of the building is office, is dedicated for office than under the original, the prior application. And that's a function of the operation of the building, which will be testified to later. The existing property to the rear is currently wooded with brush. We did have a, there was a tree assessment done back in 2018, and it was determined that there were a number of trees in the rear that were diseased or dying and needed to be removed. As far as grade, the grading of the lot is essentially cuts in the middle from a north-south direction. So the back half drains towards the railroad, the front half drains towards Sunnymead Road. There is a wetland area and drainage, drainage way to the southwest. We did receive a NJDEP letter of interpretation for the wetlands in both areas. We also received a general permit 11 for discharge from the stormwater management facilities from the prior approval. The LOI is still current. The general permit number 11, we've applied to DEP for an amendment for this application, and we anticipate getting an approval probably within the next week or so. Proposed, as I said, we have the 55,000-square-foot building. In this case, we have a, we're proposing an eight-foot-high chain-link security fence, which would have a rolling gate where I'm indicating here, which is at the, where the flag, or the stem portion of the flag opens up to the back portion. That would have a rolling gate, and then a surrounding fence that encompasses the parking area, the detention basin, and then around the southern, and it totally encompasses the site for security. We have parking for 35 passenger vehicles, which is what is required by ordinance. We have a loading area to the front, and as was stated earlier, we've reduced the number of loading bays from the 12 that was originally proposed to three. That will have a direct correlation to the traffic impact and so forth because we have reduced the number of bays. indicating here, which is at the, where the flag, or the stem portion of the flag opens up to the back portion. That would have a rolling gate and then a surrounding fence that encompasses the parking area, the detention basin, and then around the southern, and it totally encompasses the site for security. We have parking for 35 passenger vehicles, which is what is required by ordinance. We have a loading area to the front, and as was stated earlier, we've reduced the number of loading bays from the 12 that was originally proposed to three. That will have a direct correlation to the traffic impact and so forth because we have reduced the number of bays. Again, the existing driveway from General Tool will be realigned to access the flagstaff approximately halfway. So the fence and gate will not impede General Tool from accessing their property. It also allows for vehicles that are coming, coming through the flagstaff. If the gate is closed, there is opportunity for vehicles to stop in front of the gate and open it up for the, you know, whoever's there first in the morning to, to open the gate or however they're going to operate it.
Tom, if I may just jump in, because this is actually more of a legal item since the easement's being negotiated right now. Currently, the negotiations have Preferred Freezer, the soon-to-be, or future owner of lot 35.01, being the, responsible for the maintenance and reimbursement for, you know, percentage costs to be coming from General Tools. So there is a provision in there that's going to, that will be finalized that will address the maintenance for that access.
With regards to landscaping, we have shown the proposed landscaping on the plan. The landscaping is in accordance with the township ordinance. We have requested a hardship waiver, which is based on finances and so forth. That's been submitted. The board engineer has reviewed that and is in agreement with the calculations. We have a proposed number of 232 trees proposed on-site. Included in that, there is a buffer plantings along the northern property line. We have an 11-foot planting strip between the access drive and the 50-foot right-of-way, and then we also have a 20-foot planting strip as you get towards the rear and the 35 parking spaces. The ordinance requires a 30-foot buffer. We cannot achieve the 30-foot buffer within the flagstaff because the flagstaff is 50 feet wide, and we need to get a, at least a 25-foot access drive in there. I believe it's actually 28. And then as we get to the rear, it's 20 feet. Again, that's less than the 30 that's required, and it, again, it's just the layout of the, of the lot. It's towards the rear. A waiver was granted under the prior application. Again, we've, we've enhanced that with a landscape buffer, so we will be looking for a waiver for the 30-foot buffer. Also, as part of the prior approval for the solar panels, which I'm highlighting to the rear of the General Tool building, there was a provision that I believe 37, 37 or 38 additional arborvitae plantings were installed between the solar panels and the access drive as an additional buffer to the, to the access drive. And that was a condition that was held off until this type of application was, was approved. With regards to lighting, the, the site has a series of single pole-mounted lights along the access drive in the parking area and as well as the loading area and building-mounted lights. The board engineer had noted that the lights in the loading area, there are four lights, building-mounted, that are at a height of 20 feet, which exceeds the 15 feet permitted by ordinance. Our, our architect will provide some testimony as to the driving force behind the 20 feet in the loading area. It was also noted in the board engineer's report that the plans indicate a 2.6 average foot candle and the township requirement is a maximum of half a foot candle. Just for clarification, the 2.6 is within the loading area itself, and then it's broken down to 1.7 foot candles within the paved, average within the paved access drive and parking for the passenger vehicles, and then a half a foot candle average for the non-paved or the green space on site. So with that regard, we're, we may still be over the half a foot candle. The struggle that we have when we do lighting designs in, per the township ordinance, is that the minimum foot candle is .3, and the average maximum is .5. So in order to achieve that, often results in more light fixtures at a lower height to, to keep the spillover down. I will say that primarily the paved area, the loading area are what's, what's lit. There is zero foot candles at the property line, and there is also primarily zero foot candles within the green area. So we may still require a waiver. We'll certainly work with, with the board engineer to reduce that. We'll also, there's also the opportunity that off-hours, the lights can be dimmed down for security reasons, so we're willing to, to address that. But I don't want to commit to the half a foot candle because it just may be difficult to achieve on the site. The site will be served by public water from Sunnymead Road. It will also be served by a sanitary sewer line from Sunnymead, which the applicant proposes to extend the line from the north, from the newer development to the north, about 550 feet in Sunnymead Road to connect to the site. The board engineer had mentioned the restoration of Sunnymead Road to accommodate that with a full-width restoration, and what we'd like to do is work with, work with your engineer so that we can minimize the impact to the road as much as possible. So perhaps we, we're looking at a, a single lane of, of improvements. The township ordinance, I believe the township engineering standards have standards in there for trenching and restoration, and we'll certainly comply with that. And again, work with the board engineer on that if he's agreeable. With regards to stormwater management, we've, by reducing the building size, we've also reduced the, the overall lot coverage, impervious coverage. Maximum impervious coverage for, for this district is 60%. We're proposing 42.64%, which is an 11% reduction from what we had prior. So this is less impacted from an impervious standpoint, from a stormwater standpoint. The stormwater design, we have for water quantity, to the rear of the site, we have a surface detention basin, which will take care of most, will take care of the quantity from most of the building and the parking to the north. In the front of the building, we have a surface water quality basin that will be taking the drainage from the loading area and pavement adjacent to it. That then drains into an underground detention facility, after which it goes through a water quality device, a mechanical water quality device. The reason for the water quality device is because we only have that strip of land. We don't have any room to put a surface basin or anything like that to achieve water quality. We also don't want to use a porous pavement in that area because that's where our heaviest traffic would be. We are proposing porous pavement within the car parking, so that would have porous paving to help with the water quality. We have received essentially a compliance memorandum from the Delaware Canal Commission saying that our stormwater management design complies with their regulations. Their regulations are identical or in some cases more stringent than the township's, so we would be in compliance with the township. With regards to the, to the parking, we do have some waivers. These are standard waivers that typically come before the board, and those waivers are for the parking space size. Township ordinance requires, requires parking spaces that are 10 feet by 20 feet deep, but in the past has granted waivers for a 10-by-18-foot space as long as there was a two-foot overhang for the parking space. So in this case, all of our parking spaces will overhang the sidewalk. The sidewalk, as your board engineer has pointed out, needs to be dimensioned on the plan. It is a six-foot wide sidewalk, so you have a four-foot walkway and a six-foot overhang for the vehicle. And by keeping it closer to the curb, we eliminate the maintenance need for maintaining a, a two-foot strip of, of grass. Also requested is a waiver for the aisle width. Township ordinance requires an aisle, aisle width of 30 feet, and we're proposing 25. 25 is a, is a standard aisle width for, for parking lots, especially in a, in a business-type setting where folks are coming in at the beginning of the day, working, and then they're leaving at the end of the day. There's not a lot of changeover that you would find in, you know, a retail or otherwise commercial facility. And I, as I stated earlier, we're also seeking a waiver from the 30-foot wide buffer to the north. And then the other item to be addressed, and there was a plan submitted with the application, and that is that the project is located, and I would, this was, I don't know if we need to enter this, okay, this was included in the submission package.
Could you identify it, please?
Sure. It's titled Airport Hazard Area Exhibit.
Mark it A3.
And this was, this was included in your, in the submission package. Actually, I believe it was added after the fact, after our initial submission to address, I believe it was Mr. Maskey's comment. And if you look at the plan, where I'm indicating is the end of the airport runway. And then we are within the airport safety zone, which is this outer dashed line. Our building is where I'm indicating here. We take a flight path from the end of the runway, and we extend it over the building. We generate a profile, which is this plan, and this is titled Airport Hazard Area Vertical Profile.
A4.
A4. This was also included in the site. Where I'm indicating is where the elevation of the end of the runway is, and then based on the township ordinance, you apply a one-on-20 slope, which basically represents a plane landing or taking off. We extend that profile out at that slope. This dark square represents the building itself, and the flight path is approximately 84.95 feet above that, that edge of the building. So we have clearance. We also have a, a height variance, which we'll also be discussing when the architect testifies and, and later on. So we do provide clearance, as I said, the 84.95 feet of clearance, and then that continues to rise.
Mr. Decker, before we move on to whatever, can we just briefly touch on the traffic circulation for the loading dock and the trucks for-
Sure. Let me bring that back up. Okay. So this is Exhibit A2, I believe?
Yes.
For circulation, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom in here a little bit. So your vehi, the trucks are going to access off of Sunnymead Road. We've, we've broadened the curb return coming in to accommodate the trucks. That was per the original design for the, the site. Be able to access, will come through. Again, there's a, a rolling gate here. Trucks will then make a right across the front of the building, pull up to the front, right behind the, the solar panels, and then back into the, the loading, the loading base. There is also within that loading area an enclosed trash enclosure located as I'm, as I'm indicating in the, the north, northwest corner of that loading area. As far as, as far as vehicles to the site, and you'll, you'll hear the same from, from operations, they anticipate six to eight trucks per day. This is not a, you know, like a typical dry storage warehouse where you're going to have a lot of product coming in and out. This is a very specialized operation that you'll hear about. Of those six to eight trucks, most of them are going to be a small box truck. Okay, they're going to be your 25-foot trucks coming in, and there will be a couple larger, say tractor-trailer trucks, you know, a day, coming in. But you're not looking at a, at a warehouse where you have a lot of traffic coming in to deliver and pick up. So this is a much less intense traffic use than what was previously anticipated. This also has a set occupant, so we know how their operation is. We know what they anticipate in traffic. If you may, if you recall, the prior application as a dry warehouse, it was going to be leased in two different, in two halves, and we didn't know who was going to be in there at the time. Now we have a specific user.
Could you next address the, or identify the proposed signage? And we'll have the architect identify the proposed facade sign, but the standalone monument sign?
Yes, there is a proposed monument sign. It is within the 11-foot wide strip. I'm indicating it on the, on the screen. It is, it's a sign that's in compliance with the size for a monument sign. It does not have, we haven't shown any text on it yet because that is something that, it's our understanding, we can come into the township administratively for a sign permit, but everything will comply. The monument sign will comply in size, in construction. It will be located outside of any site triangles and so forth, so it will comply. And then you'll also hear later that the, there's one building-mounted sign that's proposed, and again, that will also comply with the ordinance and also be subject to an administrative approval.
And just going back to the loading areas, we're proposing three loading docks on this application, correct?
Correct.
And those are located, could you identify where they're located?
The, the loading docks are located where I'm indicating the, you'll, you'll see more of the architectural footprint in a bit, but this section that extends out to the northwest is primarily office space, and then to the, to the south, in the southwest corner of the building is a, that's where the loading area is. And then the architect will discuss, and operations will discuss how, how that building is laid out and how materials is brought in. It's not, it's not a conventional warehouse-type operation.
And with those loading areas being located in front of the building, will we be relieved from the board on that?
For the loading base being in the front of the building?
Yes.
All right, do we? Yeah, okay. Now, from a visual standpoint, everything is behind the General Tool project, property. So you have the existing General Tool building in the front. You also have the solar panels. This back portion, really, if you're coming down Sunnymead Road, you don't really see it back here. The building will also be, I won't say you won't see it at all, but as far as the building height, when you're standing on Sunnymead Road and you're looking back, and if you have to look over the General Tools building, your, your angle that you're looking at, your line of sight is going to be over the proposed building, to the rear of the proposed building. The other thing is that this building is pushed back further from what the other building was previously approved. So we have a smaller footprint. We're pushed further to the back of the property, but this, this layout worked well for them as far as delivery and pickup of product.
I believe next, it would make sense to go through the board's professionals' reports?
Sure. Okay. I spoke with your board engineer earlier this morning, or this afternoon, I forget, it's been a long day. And I believe I've, I've addressed all the items that he had identified for testimony with regards to plan revisions and so forth. We will, we will comply with the comments in his letter. Again, we would like to- Again, we would like to work with him with regards to the lighting, as well as the restoration of Sunnymead Road for the sanitary sewer. And I believe, and then certainly we will obtain all outside agency approvals. We already have Delaware River Canal essentially a compliance report. We also have Somerset County Planning Board has issued a letter of no interest, NJDEP. Again, we have the LOI and the general permit. Soil Resistant Control, I'd have to take a look at, and obviously, all the others we would have to obtain. Also included in there is the Township Fire Official. We did receive a memo from the Township Fire Marshal. He had one comment, and that was to put in an additional fire hydrant, which we'll certainly do, and we'll locate that hydrant at his discretion. We did have, did appear before the Environmental Commission. They issued a memo, and essentially their memo, they didn't ask for anything additional. It was basically highlighting the testimony and what was presented to them.
We had, we did ask for the request on the long-eared bat, excuse me, the northern long-eared bat, in terms of the taking down of the trees during the clearing season, so that was a request.
Yeah, I think that's something that we'll certainly, you know, look into from, you know, DEP requirements and so forth, and also, you know, take a look at the habitat and so forth out there.
Okay. So I know in the EIS, we weren't exactly sure where it was, you know, I know it was within a mile, but I know we had that discussion in terms of the consideration, so if you take a look at that.
We will.
And did you get the GP11? It was approved?
The GP11 was originally approved for the original application. Our flows now are less, because we have less impervious. That was submitted, and I don't think we've heard anything yet. We should be getting that in about a week. We've already heard from DEP, they're looking favorably on it, to the point where they asked us for more plans that they can certify for distribution. So we provided them those plans, and will certainly have. I would anticipate we would have the GP11 approval within the next week, certainly before the resolution is.
So that would just have to be part of the record, then?
That would be a condition of any approval, just like any outside agency.
Mr. Decker, just a couple of questions. Mr. Decker, I'm assuming there will be additional testimony regarding the operation, regarding hours of operation, number of employees, et cetera. I know you did touch on the number of trucks, it's gonna be six to eight per day perhaps. I would just ask, I read through the ONM manual from the Stormwater.
Yes.
Just make sure there's lines in there regarding the maintenance on the forest pavement and how that's to be handled, because it is a little bit different than, you know, going in and cleaning out your other detention facilities.
We will.
And one item regarding the fencing that's going around the perimeter of the property, on the south side of the building, your proposed fence is roughly located, tended, it's actually 30 feet off the property line. Any reason to not move it onto the property line and eliminate that sort of dead space between fence and the property line? That, just, if you tend to keep the fence interior on the property, everything else outside tends to just get forgotten and, just a thought.
Yeah, that's fine. We can move it to the property.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Masky.
Mr. Decker, one item, actually, on Mr. Euro's report, under landscaping and lighting number eight. Is there some testimony on that? Or are you going to defer to someone else on that one? That's the, when the operation of the lights are, et cetera.
Yes, that would be, that would be the other testimony coming up.
Thank you. Jayce?
I got just a couple on the landscape plan itself, Mr. Chairman. You have in the, especially on the northern side, I guess, of the turnaround area, which would be facing towards Sunnymead Road, you have some load, shrubs there. One would be U's, which I'll put very, as deer candy. So I'm pretty confident that those won't be around long, would be possibly a consideration. And you also have U's in the plan around the building to substitute something more deer-hardy for that, or, and also, possibly, since that is where lights would be coming out from the trucks, maybe something a little more vertical, possibly to exacerbate any lighting coming from the trucks onto Sunnymead Road.
We can certainly work with your professionals on.
Okay. And then, you know, the other was, I'm still kinda, wanna talk about the lighting as far as that parking area is, it would, maybe the next witness would be more as how many trucks would be coming in or out at night, that we would need such bright lighting at that time. That might be for your next witness, I'm not sure.
We will have an operations witness who will testify as to the hours of operation, and will be able to address, I'm sorry, will be able to address some of those concerns based upon.
You gotta get closer. Gotta be a rock star.
We'll be able to address some of those concerns based upon the hours of operation, being that it's, you know, won't, testimony would be that it won't be an all-night type of facility, so I think that will address your concerns, but we will definitely get that.
And lastly, on the road improvements, or what would be done for hooking up the sanitary sewer and all that?
Yes.
Obviously, the road is a curved or crowned road without any kind of drainage or sewers on the side, so would the road be improved after you're done, or basically brought back to what the existing conditions are? What are your plans?
It would be brought back to existing conditions. It would be trenched, and then pavement restored. There would not be any, you know, additional drainage or anything like that along there.
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions. Is the traffic impact analysis still the same, or has it changed, like from the report from the previous report?
The traffic, Gary Dean couldn't be here this evening. He prepared the report. I discussed it with Gary this morning, and basically, what Gary did in his report was, he did a, basically a proportional reduction in the vehicle loading, based on the square footage of the building. And it's been reduced. It's reduced even further because of the operation that you'll hear. As far as the, any traffic from general tool, that was already included in the traffic study as background data when it was originally done. So the traffic from general tool is already included in there, is existing, and then the study was for anything additional from the site.
Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we discuss some of that turning radius that was improved from the last time we were here? Cause.
Yes, we did talk, it was, and that was at the entrance.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons why we have this broader entrance drive coming in, to provide the ability for the larger trucks to negotiate.
Cause I know last time, or a couple of times before, some of the public had definitely concerns on some of that turning radius, and I believe we discussed it with the Environmental Commission, so I just wanted to table it right now. Not table it, but talk about it. Sorry.
No, that's, we did provide, and I believe in the plan set, there's a truck turning plan. I can pull that up if you'd like. That showed emergency service vehicles being able to come into the entrance. I see the board engineer's looking at it now. If you'd like, I can certainly pull that up if you want.
Well, I think I just wanna talk about it, cause I know it was a big concern last time.
Yeah, let me.
While you're looking, Tom, I think the other question is, what about right in? What about right, left in?
Well, left in actually requires less of a turning radius, because you're coming from the opposite lane of traffic on Sunnymead. So you have more room for a vehicle to negotiate the turn coming in. The need for the larger radius to make the right end, yeah, I know, I'm getting there, it's, there we go. Here's the, and this is the truck turning plan. This was included in the submission set, and I will zoom into the entrance. And this shows a truck, tractor-trailer coming in, that's why we broadened this entrance. Also, by broadening this entrance, trucks coming from the, traveling south on Sunnymead are also able to make the same, the same turning movement coming into the access drive. There was some discussion about the truck being, not staying to the right of the drive coming in. However, it is a driveway to a private facility, and the traffic is not heavy. The truck has the ability to move over to the right lane for a car to pass, and then, as it comes in, these are the truck movements that I was discussing earlier, as far as the delivery for a large tractor-trailer would come in, pull to the southwest corner of the loading area, and then back into the loading bays, as shown. It's this turning movement in front of the building that necessitated this area of the access drive to be a little bit wider, with a larger radius entering. So we did take a look at access from Sunnymead Road.
And Mr. Decker, I think probably it's a good point to reaffirm that with this particular use that we're proposing today, it does involve only six to eight trucks at max, or at its high demand, and the trucks are smaller, as you testified.
Most of, my understanding is most of the trucks are smaller, with only a couple large trucks like this a day.
So as opposed to what the prior application may have, the concerns that might have been raised, it might be a little different with this particular use, because there's less of a truck demand than what the prior application may have produced.
Correct.
So the other part, I can't remember, there was some concern, was trucks leaving the facility, whether or not they would be able, you know, trying to make a right out, whether or not they'd be crossing over the median.
We can certainly take a look at that and work with your engineer to make sure that we're, you know, trucks making the right-hand turn are able to. Again, they've got a wider driveway here, and can, should be able to make that swing, but we'll certainly work with the board engineer.
Right, just wanna make sure they're not gonna cross over.
And just for the record, Mr. Decker, I believe at your previous testimony, this will be the one entrance in and out of the property for both facilities, correct?
Correct. So this southern driveway will be eliminated, so there will not be two driveways in close proximity of each other.
No, but there will be one slightly north.
There will be one slightly north. There's nothing we can do about that.
I understand, my recollection, and may not be totally, is with, when we, your, the applicant was here the last time, there was concern by the neighbors of people pulling into their driveway, having mistaken their driveway for the entrance to the site.
Well, I think in this case, too, I don't believe on the previous application, we were proposing a monument sign in the front. So by having a monument sign in the front, it should assist in people accessing the property properly. And I would say that traveling down Sunnymead Road, once this driveway is put in, I think it would be evident that it's, that's a commercial driveway as opposed to the residential driveway, just due to size.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, very good, everyone's good. So I will open a motion to open up to the public.
So moved.
Second?
All a favor?
Aight.
Okay, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to question this witness? Okay, you're done for now.
I actually will be calling Mr. Decker back up as the professional planner at the close of our application. The next witness I'd like to call would be our architect, Wayne Benson.
Can you use the mic, Mr. Benson?
My name is Wayne Benson, B-E-N-S-O-N.
Mr. Johnson, could you please provide a brief summary of your educational and employment background?
Certainly. I am, I have a bachelor's degree in science from Wentworth Institute of Technology, and a bachelor's of architecture from the Boston Architectural College. I'm a partner at RKB Architects. I am a registered New Jersey architect, have been for about 12 years. I've presented as an expert witness in front of boards in Newark, Elizabeth, Linden, Woodbridge, a number of other, I can list others if you'd like.
No, that's okay. As long as no one objects, we will accept this witness as credentialed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Benson, would you please identify the architecture for the site?
Certainly. So this plan was submitted to the board. It is, it's titled Proposed Exterior Elevations. It's A1.
Why don't we mark it as A, for the purposes of the record, though, as A6.
And I'm going to, I'm going to pull in on the front elevation, just so this is the, this is the elevation that is facing the main entrance street, and you'll see the area that I'm circling with the hand is the office area. So this box, which protrudes forward, contains the main entrance on the corner, which is aluminum glass, and four windows that are part of the office area. Set back from that are the three loading doors that have been described previously, with a small canopy for weather protection over the top of them, and then the remainder of the loading dock front of the building. The materials in the front of the building is painted concrete panel, and we have a colored rendering that I'll show you later, so you can see what that looks like. Items of specific interest on this elevation, there are four lights shown on this elevation, indicated on the joints of the panels. Those lights are mounted at 20 feet, and the reason they're located at 20 feet is because the loading dock is a 50-inch-high loading dock, and then we have an 11-foot-high door over the top of it with a canopy. So for the lights to function properly, they need to be at the 20-foot height, otherwise they would be obscured by the canopy in front of it. So at 15 feet, they would actually be inside of the door. So that's, that's why we're asking to mount them at 20 feet, so specifically on that.
Before we move from that, at the front elevation, I believe that's where it shows the facade sign, maybe we can address that.
Oh, yes, certainly. So you can see the rectangle over the door, indicated here, is a 40-square-foot box, and that sign is not designed or shown here. It's gonna be submitted, as was previously noted, it'll be submitted for a permit separately from this application, but that's the location that the sign would go. It most likely would be imprinted in the concrete panel.
And it's approximately, that area's approximately 40 square feet?
40 square feet is what is shown. All right. I'm gonna just pan down here to the side elevation. This is the elevation that would be south on the plan, and what I wanna show you specifically on this is the, is the height of the building, and the building at And the building at the eve height, as noted in the application, is 36'8". And the, at the ridge point, the panel, the top of the panel is at 38 feet above the mean grade. And the reason that the building needs to be this height is, if you think about the way these buildings work, we work on a module, and that module is essentially a pallet that comes in. So you have a pallet of product that's a certain set dimension that comes into the building. Oh, I'm sorry. I pulled it away from my mic. So we're working with a pallet. And for this project to work, we need to stack five pallets high. And between those pallets, we need to put in sprinkler lines, and there's required clearance between the product and the sprinkler heads. And then we have set height for the structure, the steel structure. And we have to pitch the roof a quarter inch per foot from the center, the high point, to the side, in order for the water to drain off of it. So, it's a function, the height of the building is a function directly of that module of the pallet. And I could tell you that, you know, these buildings are expensive to run. The owner does not want it any taller than it absolutely has to be to function for this user, for the product that's stored in there. So that's why we're asking for lenience on the height for this building, in order for it to function properly.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may just quickly jump in, Mr. Chairman, the next witness will actually talk about the actual operation and the specialty of it, which will help understand why the interior pallets are so important.
Just need clarification. Clarification on the building height. Sheet 3 of 21 of the engineering plan calls for the building height at 36.8 feet, and you're testifying that the maximum height of the building is what?
38 feet.
38, okay. Just wanted to make sure, because at 38 ...
38 is what has to be stated. We measured to the highest point of the building. So, your variance is going to be based on the 38 feet, not 36.
Yes, and that's where we're ...
That's why I went into the explanation about the height.
And just confirming, because if it was 38.5, you would be over 10%?
Yes.
Which would then create a ...
Yes. No, it is 38 feet. We are still under a C variance, and we intend to stay that way. There was, when we were preparing the plans, like as the witness testified, the eve was at 36.8, and that's what was included on the plans. A little confusion as to what the actual height is, so that's why I wanted to make sure with that.
Thought we were looking at a quick adjournment there for a minute.
No. With the testimony, I wanted to clarify that it is actually at the feet 38 feet.
Thank you very much.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to go to the floor plan sheet, which should be the next in the set. And you've seen ...
Did you see, sir, what this document is?
Yes, sir. So this building, this sheet is titled Proposed Overall Floor Plan, and it is sheet A4 of the set, which was submitted.
And this is A7. Thank you.
And the floor plan is oriented the same as the site plan that you've seen previously. The main roadway and entrance drive is on this portion of the plan. The office area is this bump out here, in this area here. In back of it is a product testing area, which the operations person will tell you some more about in materials. The product enters into the building here along the loading docks, so those three loading docks are here. It's sorted and then moved into the specialized temperature-controlled compartments, which occupy the majority of the plan. So there's two freezer areas for product, a cooler area for finished good products, and then a dry good storage area, this area down here, which is utilized for packaging and other materials, which are not the finished product. At the south end of the plan, we have some maintenance facility areas, building sprinkler systems, the area where the waste material is stored prior to being picked up by the certified waste control corporation. And we have a wash area. The only place in this building where there is a mezzanine area is this box here. And what happens above that box is there's the freezer control machine room. So there's the vessels and the equipment that runs the cooler system that occupies above here. Tucked in back of this is where the generator, condensers, and transformers for the operation of the building are located.
Not to interrupt, I apologize, but the generator is the only portion that's out exterior. Well, it's the exterior.
Well, the generator is here, there's a transformer that's exterior, and then there is a condenser, so for the refrigeration system. So those are located exterior on a pad. And it's sited such that to minimize any impact that they would have on an neighboring property.
Thank you. And what I was trying to say, and I was getting tongue-tied, was the refrigerator units for this cold storage warehouse are actually located interior.
That's correct. So these units that you see here are hung from the ceiling of the freezer, and those are the evaporators that they're blowing cold air down the aisles of the freezers. And unlike the olden, the freezers of the olden days, where there was a big box on the roof and you saw equipment, that's not the case in this building. This building, the units are contained, there is no penetrations through the roof of the freezer building.
Is it a backup generator, or ...
It is a backup generator, yeah. So it's for a case of emergency.
So it's not going to be running?
No. So no, sir.
It would just, in case the power went out?
That's correct. So, I'm going to move to the next sheet. And this sheet is titled Rendered Elevations, and it is numbered D7.04, and it was submitted with the package.
AA.
AA. So this is colored elevations of the building to show the board the proposed color schemes a little bit. So, again, this is the front elevation, the office area, and the, so what you see here is a white painted concrete panel with gray accents. So these are accents that are cast into the panel system, and some medallions and contour lines shown here. And the freezer portion of the building is insulated metal panel. So it's a white insulated metal panel, and it runs along the sides and the back, and it's shown with the vertical scored lines that you see in these areas. So, that material is necessary due to the temperature control of the building. So that's the, but the durable front portion of the building is concrete panel.
That's all I have for this witness. If any questions from the board of the professionals?
Where's the generator on that elevation sheet?
Okay, so on this ...
And is it, it's an enclosed area? I know it's exterior, but is it wrapped with ...
Yeah, so it exists here, okay? So it's not drawn as part of this, but this stair comes down. So the machine room for the refrigeration is located here. And then that equipment is located here, and it's easier for me to show it to you on the plan. Unfortunately, it's not drawn here on this elevation, but if we go back to the plan, you can see that stair that I was pointing at is here. And then that equipment exists here in back of that stair.
Okay. And does that represent a fence that's around it, the liner, or is that just a ...
No, that's a concrete pad.
That's the pad, okay. So it will be open area?
That would be open. I think the transformer may be fenced. I'll defer to the operations on that.
Any additional questions? Anyone from the audience?
Yep. I'm George Marias, 700 Club Board.
George, why don't you use that mic so he can answer your question? You don't have to go back and forth.
My only question is the generator. How often will that be tested? And what length of time does it need to run during the test?
Well, it's exercised once a week for 20 minutes. The operations person will, once he's sworn in, will testify to that.
Anyone else?
I've got one question, so maybe operations can answer this. So, the refrigeration units, will there be any noise emitting from the building at all from those units?
So the condenser will have some noise associated, but very low levels.
Below.
It's a fan. Essentially, it's a fan within an air conditioner, within the air conditioning unit, so. So I couldn't say that there's no noise, but it's minimal.
Noise ordinance, it would be below?
It'll be below the noise.
Okay.
If you have a question, come on up. Just use the mic there and just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Domacy. I'm the owner of General Tool Specialties, and I have two huge units outside my building. You came here, they're very quiet, and they run all day. I run them night and day because I have to maintain 72 degrees in my company based on the equipment I have. And I haven't had a complaint from any of the neighbors about it. So that should really end that argument or discussion.
I just want to ask the attorney, do we need to swear him in? He's providing testimony. Okay, we can swear him in, please, first.
Do you have any testimony to give tonight, or that you've already given? Is it true the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Yes.
And what was your name again?
John.
Speak into the microphone, please.
John K. Domacy Jr. D-O-M-I-C-I.
Mr. Domacy, just for the record, how long have you owned General Tool?
Microphone, please.
Microphone, good. Looks like rock star time.
Thanks. Since 1991.
And the air conditioning?
Excuse me, let me correct that. I've been in business for 42 years, and I've been in Hillsborough since '82, and I moved to Sunnymead Road in 1991. Does that clear that up?
Well, the air conditioning units you testified to, how long have they been on the site?
For 22 years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Domacy.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On my next one.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, just a clarification on the mayor's question. Sheet 3 of 21 of the submitted site plans does show a fenced enclosure around that outdoor cannibal equipment.
Sorry, what sheet was that?
Sheet 3 of 21.
The architects' plan to the engineers?
Engineers' plan.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to call my, Mr. Chairman, my next witness, Sean Cunningham.
Okay. Swear you in.
Sean Cunningham? I do. Sean, S-E-A-N, Cunningham, C-U-N-N-I-G-H-A-M.
Mr. Cunningham, could you just briefly explain your position with preferred freezer, any connection with this project?
Yes, I'm responsible for the construction of the various facilities across the country. We have about 42 across the country. Worked for preferred for about six years. Engineering degree at West Virginia University.
And can you give us a description of what the proposed use would be for this facility?
Yes, this facility is going to be used for pharmaceutical-grade product. We're going to be making, we're going to be receiving plasma in from donor facilities across the country.
And ...
Also, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sean. Also included will be raw materials, so that will be the reason to get the larger trucks in. And then we'll be receiving finished product. Finished product will be coming in and going out for distribution.
And can you give us a brief summary of how the site actually operates, the refrigeration units?
Sure. We have various compartments here. The various compartments, first compartment at the bottom end will be housing raw materials. So this will be dry space, we refer to it as dry space, as defined by USP for United States Pharmacopeia. That'll be 68 to 77 degrees. That'll be for raw materials, packaging components. So it will have associated environmental controls. The next two compartments, these are partitioned walls that actually go through a thermal break at the sub slab and up and through the decking of the roof, and they allow us to change temperatures between these two compartments. So those will be at minus 30 degrees, and that's where the plasma will be housed. Actually, I think, I'm sorry, this one, the cooler space, is actually where finished good will be. Finished good is, that's the second compartment up, and that'll be 36 to 46 degrees, a set point of 41 degrees, and that'll be housing the finished product that will go out for further distribution. As the architect, Wayne Benson, had mentioned, we use what's called a VNA system, which is a very narrow aisle. That's a 74-inch beam, curb-to-curb, and that allows us to increase density within the space. So that's why we go vertical. We go about five tiers up, and we use an APS system, which is automatic pallet positioning that allows us to do semi-automation of storage to have better accuracy of inventory. So in the cooler space, that's throughout the entire space of the warehouse. The cooler space will be finished product. The other two compartments will be plasma. So those will be temperature-controlled to minus 32 degrees C, about 22 degrees F. And the way the process flow will work, we have the three inbound doors. They're going to be inbound and outbound. So materials will come in, they will go through this processing area here, where we will do some associated lot tracking information. Then the materials will come back out of this processing area and go in for storage and be tracked within our inventory system. Upon receipt of raw materials, we will go into this raw material sampling booth. It's a laminar flow booth that prevents any contaminants from getting into the material. Samples are sent out to the analytical lab. Analytical lab tests the material, makes a determination they're acceptable for use. When the materials are assembled into a kit, they're sent out to Melville, Long Island. Melville, Long Island will receive raw materials, packaging components, the plasma as well. They go through a process where they extract out of the plasma the protein that becomes the API, or the active pharmaceutical ingredient. That is then introduced into finished-level product. We receive finished-level product back from Melville, we store it, and then we put it out for distribution to various pharmacies. It's an RX product. It is used for fetus. It saves about 10,000 fetuses a year.
And is this use regulated by the FDA?
Yeah, this is a heavily regulated facility, so there are sanitation requirements associated with the facility. We do go through periodic FDA inspections. Those FDA inspections, if we do not comply with the CFR, we are cited with a 4E3. So it's always in our best interest to comply with the requirements of the regulations. What else are they going to say? Oh, the outside of the facility, obviously, has got to be aesthetically beautiful, because when the FDA comes up, we want to ensure that, you know, the general appearance of the facility is the perception of how well it's controlled inside.
And can you just touch on the number of employees that would be at the site and the hours of operation?
Yeah, we're estimating our hours of operation would be from 8:00 in the morning till about 6:00 o'clock at night, and we'd have between 20 and 25 people on site.
And I believe it was testified already, but can you confirm the number of deliveries that is estimated for the cycle?
We estimate between six to eight trucks daily.
And the products on the site, are they stored for a significant period of time, or is it frequently shipped out?
You know, there's, you know, in terms of the frequency of the shipments, in terms of outbound, we're going to be kitting lots going out to the Melville. There'll be the short trucks, the 25-foot trucks. Raw materials will be the larger trucks. We were expecting to work off all the inventory currently down in North Carolina at a third party, the 3PL. So there will not be a ramp-up period. So we consider that to be a steady state, six to eight trucks on a regular basis.
That's all the question I have for this witness to the board of the professionals.
With the outbound distribution, so will the same trucks that are coming in, the same process outbound, or do you have trucks on site that will, you'll pack and go outbound with?
I mean, it's a good point, because we do try to equilibrate the truck to make sure it meets the temperature required prior to loading. But I don't know if we'll be able to get it inbound as an outbound. So it'll probably be a unique truck that will come in to actually sort of ...
But do you store trucks, are trucks stored on site to pack and then go deliver?
No. No, there's no plans to have any storage on site.
Trucks visiting, you load them up and then they go?
Correct.
Okay.
What are the raw materials that you're working with?
They're all excipients. They're all inert materials. There's no active materials. So there's filler materials associated with the product.
So you're not manufacturing, it's more of an assembly of a package? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. It's more of a kit.
So are you generating any biomedical waste?
Material, when it arrives onsite is another good question, but when the material does arrive onsite, it's already pre-frozen. So it will be at the minus 30 degrees. If we do happen to damage material, we do have a procedure in place for the handling of regulated medical waste, and then we will use Stericycle for the proper disposal.
Okay. So you have a storage area inside somewhere then?
We do. We have it regulated. If you look down here, there's an RMW space right below where Wayne had pointed out, the mech room to the refrigeration space. And then to the right of that is a pallet washer, so we make sure that if there is a spill, we have the ability to clean the pallets so we don't cross-contamination.
And I guess if there, the only thing that I'm thinking too is if there's, you know, a spill on the unloading portion of it. So, I mean, do you have any experience with that?
I mean, the thing is, is just to give you guys a comfort level, the material's frozen, so the probability of spill is virtually, you know, probably not something that we need to worry about. It's not like it's loose liquid. It's frozen plasma.
Okay.
Is any of the waste, is that strictly going to be held in bins or is there any?
Yes, Stericycle provides bins that we would use to put the material in, and then when we got to a certain level, they would come in and pick up and take for disposal. And we'd have a full COD, a certification of destruction, certification of disposal.
So there's no opportunities, you know, if there was a spill or anything became unfro, you know, back into a more of liquid state, anything that would go down, any type of, you know, waste water lines?
We have redundant, the refrigeration system itself has levels of redundancy, so the probability of ever being in a position where we can't freeze the material, which is a very high value of goods, we'd be in serious trouble. But the redundancy that's built into the refrigeration, redundancy that's built into the gen set, we feel that we have everything covered where we'd never be in a position like that.
Okay. And would you accept, be accepting any product returns or damaged product back from customers?
They use, the company that we will be working with uses a third-party for all product returns.
What is the, when the product is delivered, you said it's in frozen state, and how is it contained at that point?
It's contained in plastic cylinders.
Okay. Individualized, or are they then in a larger canister?
One-liter container.
Okay.
So essentially, the dumpster that you have is strictly just for office waste? That's only for its use for?
Correct. Municipal waste.
Yeah.
No plans on expanding to use tankers at all for any?
No plans to expand. You know, what we're trying to do is we're a food-grade facility, and we're trying to branch off into the pharma space, and this will be our first exposure with biotech.
Okay. So no tanker trucks? So it's strictly going to be?
Oh, no tanker trucks? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no tanker trucks.
I mean, we'll have a tanker truck onsite from time to time to fill the gen set with diesel.
Okay. But nothing as far as with product?
No. No.
Said hours would be 8 to 6, is that correct?
Correct.
And does that mean there'll be no trucks before 8 or after 6?
We assume not. You know, sometimes drivers show up later, sometimes the drivers show up early, you know, pending their deliveries.
How late is late?
We will do our best to make sure that they stay within the window.
I think the board, up to the board what that window might be.
So essentially, a truck shows up at 5:30 to be unloaded. How long does it take to get unloaded?
To unload a truck, it's usually about 26 pallets. It's about 13 down two lanes, so it might take maybe a half hour to unload a truck.
Okay.
These are all contracted trucks? There's not going to be any plans to have company-owned vehicles?
No, they're all, they're all common carrier.
Okay.
And the truck? Go ahead.
If a truck comes after hours, after 6 or 7, is the gate closed and will they be then staging on the driveway, or would they have access to stage at the loading dock?
No, the perimeter will be secured when there's nobody there. We also have, you know, various security controls around the entire perimeter, so there will be no... Bless you. But there will be no access to the site when there's no operational personnel.
If I may just add a few questions to maybe clarify. This is, as you stated, this is a very high-end product that would be coming into the facility, so it's, the chances that a delivery would be made unexpectedly wouldn't really be likely. I mean, anything could happen, but it's not something, usually everything is pretty monitored with regard to these deliveries because of the exposure for the product, would you say?
Yeah, I mean, Joe's, I should have brought that up. I mean, if these products, the product that's coming in, it has to be kept at 30 degrees, you know, there's no way that we can leave a truck sitting out there in the middle of the summer and potentially put the product at risk. So we will, if there happens to be a truck out there and we know he's going to be late, we will stay late to cover that truck.
Okay. Will they be onsite?
Quick question, just to clarify. It's plasma, it's another word for blood, right? So it's?
Yeah, it's a component of blood.
Of blood. So it's like a big blood bank?
Like a big blood bank.
Okay. Thank you.
And the plasma is strictly packaged, it's not, you wouldn't have any contaminated parts or components that might have been?
I mean, there's no bloodborne pathogens. I mean, this is, this product has gone through levels of inspection, and the individual that we're extracting, they're taking the plasma from, has also gone through some level of testing to make sure that his plasma is acceptable for our use, and that there's various quality checks prior to that product even going into the finished level product.
All right. But there still needs to be precautions. Everyone needs to get their, there still needs to be precautions.
Oh, absolutely.
Regardless.
Yeah, I mean, we're expecting to be able to improve the delivery of the supply chain by increasing the capacity of this facility and maybe say go from 10,000 fetuses a year. The fetus is having complications in the womb. This is injected into the fetus, and the fetus survives the complication. So with this increase in size of facility, we're expecting to be able to increase that level of production and being able to maybe improve that number.
And products can be stored overnight onsite, so is, I'm assuming there'll be onsite security, or are you going to be relying on strictly security cameras?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. We have a very sophisticated security system. We have analytical cameras. The analytical cameras can actually detect movement around the property. If there's movement around the property, that breaches the actual security. Central monitoring station is notified, and the proper authorities are dispatched.
I'm sorry, did you up and say, I saw 8 to 6, was this a Monday to Friday only operation?
Monday to Friday, probably an occasional Saturday.
How occasional?
So your sincere question, so how occasional?
Rare.
You guys run their business, come on, who cares?
Six trucks.
Yeah, I think, you know, sometimes weather becomes a complication, and, you know, they're on the road, and, you know, you gotta, gotta make provisions. Yep. Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the waste is regulated medical waste, but it's not an infectious waste.
Correct.
Correct.
It still needs to be accounted for. It still needs to be accounted for.
No, I understand, but there is a difference.
Yeah.
Plasma is different than something that could be infectious.
Yeah, I used to work for Shearing Plow. You guys know Shearing Plow up there in Kenilworth? But Shearing Plow, we used to do a lot of sampling on different primates. So when we did the primates, we would have to incinerate. So that was regulated medical waste because we did have infectious material because of the way we handled the primates and what we did.
Remember feeling bad for those monkeys?
Just so we're clear, there's no incineration onsite here.
Or no monkeys.
No monkeys, no incineration.
All right. What's it?
Any other questions from the day, from our professionals? I will open it up to the public who would like the question, witness. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
No. Lighting.
Was that the operation? Is that?
Yeah, all of our sites do have lighting control panels. That's part of our MEP drawings. So yes, we will do what's required to dim the lighting to make sure we don't have bleed off into the adjacent properties.
Works.
I mean, given that it's not a night operation, we're assuming that you could have minimal lighting at night. I mean, we understand security purposes, yeah, but that should be...
That's the primary purpose.
Should be fairly limited, I would think.
Primary purpose is just to light up the perimeter edge for security reasons. We do have every, I guess, rich rate, every 100 feet, we have egress doors. So there are ways for individuals to potentially penetrate the building through the egress doors, so it is ideal to have lighting so that we see what's going on.
Would you have any objections? Because I know it's the loading area lighting that's a concern at the 20-foot height. Would you have any objections to that, those lights being turned off at 8:00 PM since there'll be no operations or no activity after that? And the only reason is because as you get into the winter months, you know, it comes 6 o'clock, it's going to be dark. So that'll give time for employees to leave. 8:00 PM, your four lights on the building in the loading area are turned off. You still do have parking lot, home-mounted lights, which could then suffice for coverage for any activity, miscellaneous activity on the floor.
Sure, that should be no problem at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My last witness is to recall, Mr. Decker, to provide planning testimony to mix in with the variance application.
Still under oath, Mr. Decker.
Okay, thank you.
Thought that we had a war over him.
Mr. Decker, it might be best to quickly or briefly go through all of the waivers and variances that we are requesting this evening?
Yes. From, as far as waivers, design waivers, we're looking for the reduction from the 10-foot by 18, or 10-foot by 20-foot parking space to a 10-by-18, provided we have a two-foot overhang. We're looking for a waiver from a 30-foot wide aisle to a 25-foot wide aisle. And we're also looking for a reduction from the 30-foot buffer from the parking to a 11-foot buffer along the flagstaff and a 20-foot buffer along the parking area to the northeast.
Let me just interject, those are really two different things. You need a variance for a required 20-foot buffer regardless of the parking, that's along the flag stem.
Oh, okay.
You need a waiver for the 30-foot buffer from the parking lot. So it's two different things.
Okay. I stand corrected. So we do need the 20-foot wave, a 20-foot, a variance for the 20-foot buffer along the flagstaff. We just cannot achieve that. The flagstaff was approved as part of the prior subdivision. It's 50 feet wide. To have a 20-foot wide buffer there only gives us 30 feet to get a drive-in, and that just mathematically does not work. So we would request the variance on that due to the shape of the lot. And then we have the other waivers that I had mentioned before. Parking space size, the aisle width, as well as the 30-foot parking buffer. And again, those are geometric, those are not...
And I believe, yes, the loading, reloading places located in the front of the building?
Yes, and the three loading places located in front of the building, as I testified to before.
And then we also are looking for a waiver from the lighting requirements while we're going to look and do our best to comply, work with the foreign engineer, the board engineer to reduce that. We, the likelihood that, I think you testified, like, could have gotten to the average of .5.
When the, when the, when the lights are lit in their entirety, we may, we may not be able to achieve that half-foot handle. However, based on testimony that you heard from the operator, we will be able to dim and reduce the lighting specifically in the loading area, which will help reduce that average in the night hours.
And the last ugly waiver is the economic hardship waiver for the tree?
Yes, the economic hardship waiver. We did submit for that. Again, that's a calculation based off of the anticipated construction cost for the project. The town has a provision that takes that calculation, applies a percentage to it, and then that's then calculated to the number of trees that are required for tree mitigation. And we submitted that, and we exceed what is required.
And the two variances we need, which fall under bulk C variance, one is, as we already spoke to, the variance for the 20-foot buffer on the flagstaff, and then also is for the maximum building height, correct?
Correct. We heard testimony from the, from the architect, which drives the reasons for the building height variance. The township ordinance requires a 35-foot-high maximum building height. We are seeking a variance for an additional three feet to a height of 38 feet at its highest point. That is less than the 10% that would trigger a D variance. So we still are a C variance for the, for the height. And as testified, it's really a function of the building. If you think about, you know, we're in an I-1 zone, so an industrial use, 35 feet can be very difficult for an industrial use to accommodate product. You typically have a larger building. That larger building requires a longer distance to achieve a pitch on the roof. You have loading bays, you have storage. So, and as testified, the applicant certainly wants to keep the height as low as possible, but still operational. We don't see this as being any negative impact due to the location of the, of the building. It is set back off of Sunnymead Road. There is a building in front of it, which will help to obscure the building in the back, not in its entirety, but also, but to at least help minimize the impact. And it is also, excuse me, it's also pushed back further in that, in that lot than what was previously approved. And the rear of the lot fronts a freight railroad and the golf course. So there's really no visual impact that would negatively affect the neighbors.
And the height variance being 38 feet and 35 feet, that is a three-foot increase from what's permitted?
That is a three-foot increase from what's permitted. If we went another half a foot, that would trigger a D variance.
And would you, your opinion as the professional planner, find that that would substantially impair the intent or purpose of the master planner zoning if the board granted such a variance?
Do I think it would impair it?
Right.
No.
The same with the, with the variance for the flagstaff, given the extent of the variance and the physical conditions of the property, do you believe that would propose any negative impacts onto the adjacent property owners or to the master planner zoning for the municipality?
No, I do not.
And the overall development as proposed, would you opine that that would be a positive benefit for the site? Provide some, promote the purposes of zoning and promote the general welfare for the development of the site?
I do.
And would you believe, testify, or is it your testimony that would also increase the utility of the site?
Yes, it does.
That's all I have for this witness, you're right.
It was one of the waiver, you did request a submission waiver for the community impact statement.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Community impact. We did request a waiver for the community impact statement. Community impact statement typically is more beneficial for a residential improvement because it generates schoolchildren, emergencies, more emergency services and so forth. And so we requested a waiver for that.
Additional comments from the day, questions, professionals, public? Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all the witnesses I have. At this point, I just ask that the board consider the application and hopefully vote favor or reject in favor.
Eric. Guardians.
It's a motion to adopt a preliminary and final measure of site plan approval with C bulk variances and waivers, as well as meeting all of the conditions and requirements agreed to by the applicant during the testimony, as well as in response to the reports of the various professionals to construct a 55,838 square-foot warehouse/office building on lot 35.01 with associate...
on Lot 35.01 with associated parking and stormwater and shared access through Lot 35. I would remind the applicant that there are a number of conditions that do need to be met prior to this project going forward, not the least of which includes the easement agreement and the GP 11.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, no, yeah, I'll make a motion to move File 19 PBO2 MSPV.
As stated.
As stated by Mr. Bernstein.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Committing the money?
I'll say yes, and I also like to state that this is a nice, clean, regulated use for this property that I think that could be the best for both the residents around us and the town.
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes. Yes, and good luck on your PAI. Yeah.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Got a silver turn, right? I was ready to get up and walk away myself.
Next meeting.
Yeah, no, it's nice.
Just to review the schedule, the next meeting is March 28th. There'll be a presentation by the Capitol Budget Committee and we also have an application on that night as well. And just to give you a heads up, we, we will be using all three meetings in April. They all have agendas. So please put them on your calendar, April 4th, April 11th, and April 25th.
Okay. So with the busy agenda, I just ask everyone to let Mr. Maskey know as soon as, or as early as possible if anyone can't attend any meetings. So with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Good night.
All right.